I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gagnon, any additions or deletions? Oh, I'm sorry, let's do roll call. I'm jumping ahead. Roll call.
Artl Hunter. Kimberly Jackson.
Present.
Brian Colton.
I'm here.
Julius Wiggum.
Present.
Marcus Shepard.
Here.
Renee James.
Here.
Frederick McCoy. Cedric Barber, II.
Cedric, here.
Edward Canoe.
Here.
For Miss President.
Let the record...
Fred.
We flag the record. Mr. McCoy is here.
Here.
Mr. Gagnon, any additions or deletions?
Good afternoon, Jeff Gagnon, playing as only administrator. For tonight's meeting, I just want to describe the documents that have been provided to the board, along with our agenda packet, there's also correspondence from Mr. Sheppard in regards to a board conversation on last meeting. Also there were copies of the Planning, Zoning, and project list from March of 2015 distributed, as well as copies of a document titled "The ABCs of Parliamentary Procedure", which discusses Robert's rules of order. Also, I'd like to make mention of the fact and thank both Ms. Brooks and Ms. Davis, our former board members, and also to welcome Mr. Barber and Ms. Shepard to the board. We appreciate their efforts and their willingness to volunteer. I guess perhaps prior to start the new business, maybe we can all just do a really short introduction just to familiarize each other at the board's welcome.
Do you want to do that now?
Sure.
Okay.
My name's Ed Canoe, I'm the chairperson of the Planning and zoning board. I've been on the Planning and zoning board for a number of years.
Mr. McCoy?
Frederick McCoy, Planning and zoning board member, three years, thank you.
Julius Wiggum, Planning and zoning board member, member of the board since 1999, thank you.
Cedric Barber, II, Brian Newton, the planning and zoning board.
Brian Colton, member of the planning and zoning board for approximately two, two and a half years.
Margaret Shepard, a former member, I think for about three years, and glad to be back.
Renee James, and in a second, term on the PNC board.
Kimberly, Kimberly Jackson, alternate member, been a member for about two, two years.
On behalf of the board, we'd like to welcome our new members and appreciate your volunteering to be on this board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCoy.
Question of the organization, I just noticed, well, not just, but a few days ago noticed the assignment, I guess we welcome these new members as regular members and not officers. Do you know why that was, Jeff?
Yes, it's how the city council nominated them to the board.
Thanks.
Okay. Item number four, disclosure of any board members and adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Motion by Mr. McCoy, second by Ms. James. Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Marcus Shepard?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Cedric McCoy?
Yes.
Cedric Barber, II?
Yes.
Edward Canoe?
Yes.
Any other votes, voting motion approved?
Approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm sorry, I thought that was the approval.
Oh, I'm not, yeah. No, that was the adoption of the agenda.
That was the agenda.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a second motion and a second to approve the minutes. Mr. Velazquez?
Motion by Mr. McCoy, second by Ms. James.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Marcus Shepard?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Cedric McCoy?
Yes.
Cedric Barber, II?
Yes.
Edward Canoe?
Yes.
Any other votes, voting motion approved?
Any unfinished business, Mr. Gagnon?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. Moving on to new business. Item A, discussion workshop item, a proposal to amend the city's code of ordinances regarding the site plan review. Do you want to make your presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair. To give a brief overview to the board, currently, when a site plan is approved by city council, there's a specific timeframe that our code of ordinances provides to initiate development and to specifically initiate construction. That's an eighteen-month window. From that point in time, once construction is initiated, there isn't a bookend to describe when development is to be completed by. So this is staff's first attempt, and this is again in graph format, to try to come up with regulations that would provide that bookend and provide a set time for development to have been complete once it is approved by city council. The agenda package tonight, and also displayed on the screen, is section thirty-one dash sixteen, which is titled "Automatic Termination of Site Plan Approval." And this is, again, in strike-through and underline format, so anything that is stricken through is proposed to be removed, anything underlined is new material. And again, this is graph format, very open for instant comments. What staff's intent currently is, is to provide a timeframe of five years to commence construction and complete construction, as well as providing two six-month extension periods, which would prolong that potential development timeline up to a total of six years. So most of the language that you see is already currently existing in the code. There's some minor housekeeping items within the code itself where I think additional points of clarity are added. And on the second page, starting with section H, that underlined section really proposes hervage within the ordinance. And I could read that into the record if the board chooses, or if just want to have an open discussion, that's fine by staff as well.
We can go to open discussion. Any board members have any comments to make?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCoy?
Two, number, I guess I gave the page number, I can't figure out what. Section thirty-one sixty, number two.
Is that C two?
Yes, sir. Two, eight, I'm sorry, C two, H one, if that's correct. C two, H one, so the last page of the draft language. It's established that a property owner may request a six-month extension to develop and receive a certificate of occupancy by a written request to the Director of Community Development. And my question is of that request. What are we then basing the approval of the request on? I mean, is there something internally that community development, the director or staff is going to be looking at?
Yeah, when we looked at that from the staff perspective, we didn't know if we want to have certain criteria or conditions in order to apply or institute that six-month extension or an additional six-month extension. So as of right now, the way it's proposed, there isn't necessarily a hardship condition that would have to exist. It's really just upon request, and then there's also a payment that's associated with that request to extend that six months, so it's a $5,000 payment that's currently proposed in discussion with Mr. Sheppard. Prior to the meeting, staff is also considering implementing potentially an additional section that would accommodate extraneous information that the code doesn't, so if there were to be an act of God, a natural disaster, there was a mention of potential litigation on a property that could go on for years. So to try to encompass all of those potential things is difficult, but we want to try to attempt to do that. So any additional language that you guys have to suggest, we'd be welcome to hear and accommodate those requests.
Mr. Chair, follow up.
Mr. McCoy?
I think it's necessary, what I'm thinking already, my first question is, has there been an instance that would necessitate us actually approving this language? And I think we all know, at least from our prior meetings, there has been a meeting on city council meeting that a site plan application has been outstanding for a number of years. And maybe there's another situation or another instance, and I kind of want to know about that. But I want to see if staff will be inclined to extend this language to include a review by, maybe perhaps the planning board or final decision by the city council. Because if for whatever reason the community development don't think that it wants an extension, then I want at least a final decision or some sort of alternate appeal process to be the final decision by maybe some board or something like that. That's just my thought. And I certainly am.
Yeah, I think that idea is a good one. Currently, we utilize a development special magistrate if there were to be an appeal of staff's decision. So perhaps that could be the decision-making authority to review any sort of extraneous circumstances, whether that was an act of God or litigation, something along those lines where it's a previously-proved third party that can make an informed decision on whether or not an extension could be granted, then that way it eliminates any other political discussions from the picture, so it would be based on facts only.
Mr. Chair, follow up.
Go ahead.
I've never heard of a development special magistrate, is that something that we utilize now?
Yes, recently, the city had switched from the zoning board of adjustment to an individual development special magistrate, similar to our unsafe building hearings or code enforcement hearings, where there's a selected individual that is qualified and makes those determinations and rulings.
Sure. And I guess, just from my information, that can be referenced in the code of ordinances, the special development magistrate?
Yes, there is a section that already describes it, but we could also discuss and describe it within this section as well.
Well, I'm certainly not suggesting a special development special magistrate. I'm just curious, because this is the first I'm hearing, and I think as a planning and zoning board, when we make these kinds of decisions, we need to understand what the process is behind the development special magistrate, because I certainly am not suggesting it until I have a really good understanding of how that works, because this is the first I'm hearing of it, and I don't want to suggest that until maybe I have more information on it. So, you know, it's certainly something that we can keep open. I want to try to look up the code of ordinances about that. Would you know what it is off the top of your head, perhaps? Or what chapter I should say?
I can get it if you have it in the meeting.
Okay, next meeting will be fine, or I guess sometime in between will be good.
Mr. Gagnon, why don't you just email that link to all of us, so they all have it?
Sure.
Follow up.
Go ahead.
What's the basis for the $5,000 fee? Is that best practice, or what's the reasoning? Because $5,000 would seem like a lot of money if it's a hardship or a financing issue that a developer or someone that's looking to build has came into, so to tax a $5,000. I'm kind of curious how we get to that number.
Sure. At this point, it's the generic number that was implemented into the draft ordinance. It can change either way, it can be reduced, it can be eliminated, it can be increased.
Sure. I guess if it costs more than the initial special, I mean, not a special, site plan application, then really was, when I did expire, so I just was curious about that.
We want to have at least a fee, because the way that staff envisioned it would be a project would have already gone through their building permit approval. So if there was a project that was mid-construction that already had some cost into development or they were currently working on a project, it's something that, in extension, would need to occur. It would potentially utilize staff time as well, so we can make it more of a factor of actual staff time used, but we're also looking, again, in this draft ordinance to come up with more of a, I guess, generic parameters, just to start from.
Sure, that's if I'm not mistaken, thank you.
Okay. Any other board members?
Yes.
Ms. Barber?
Referring to section thirty-one A, how is it that we came to the eighteen-month automatic expiration after the site plan is approved?
That is a very good question, and I don't have a direct answer. That is part of the existing code, and that was approved back in 1991 through ordinance twenty-five twenty. So perhaps I could pull that ordinance and might describe within the awareness clauses or the sections, how staff could then get to that number, but that's been consistent for about, well, since nineteen ninety-one.
Follow up.
Mr. Barber?
And, well, this is down to H one, follow up to Mr. McCoy's questions, and it's the same type of question as far as the five-year expiration date. I'm assuming that that may be the same, you've just taken that from prior documentation, but I have to ask, how do we fund that, that particular number?
Yes, what's happened recently on a few of the resolutions that have gone before city council, there have been conditions of approval that have dictated development has to be complete within five years. There was a condominium development that was recently approved on Singer Island. It's called The Balloon, at thirty-seven thirty, and there was a condition of approval for five years with that project. So it's something that could just be implemented through conditions of approval. However, we want to have something more sturdy than just adding the condition of approval. We want to be able to reference a specific code section for further development projects.
Follow up, is, follow up.
Mr. Barber, go ahead.
Did we look at any prior projects, and is there a absolute longest term that it might take to build a certain project, and an absolute shortest term in making that determination of a five-year period?
Yeah, when we consulted at a staff level, both the building official and community development director felt comfortable with that five-year window. It provides for some leeway with initiating development, but it also doesn't allow for more of an open-ended project where construction can start, and then for the next ten, twenty, thirty years, once they pull permits, technically, it's an active project. So we're looking to constrain that somewhat.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a couple of comments. In the language, I'm proposing that we, everywhere that it states owner of the property, we replace that with the applicant, because I don't think in all instances, they're one and the same. So this would be the applicant, the person who's making the application, correct?
Does that language exist within text that doesn't have an underlining strike-through?
It's kind of throughout the document. The first place that occurs is under thirty-one sixty-eight, and it is the first run-on sentence.
Okay.
It's one sentence. So the third line.
I do see that in the third line there. What I can do is I can look through the document to determine if that's the best language. Again, that's what currently exists, so we can always go back and look at that. Oftentimes, the property owner assigns the responsibility of getting site plan approval to a specific agent, so an agent acts on behalf of the owner. But more often than not, once an approval is granted, the property owner has the final say. So staff will be more than willing to go back and look and make sure that it works throughout the ordinance. And we can bring back the version at the next meeting that references that.
Okay, follow up, Chair?
Yes.
Same section thirty-one sixty, C. After the strike-through, where it says "and environmental control" on forms provided by the city, such petition, we've already said that it's going to be a written request, so we need to change that word from petition to written request.
Noted.
Also, I wanted to confirm that we're stating that only one person is going to be able to approve the site plan. Extension is so granted, and that's the director. I propose that instead of just saying the Director of Community Development, we just say the Community Development Department, unless that one person is going to have sole authority. And I think Councilman McCoy brought that up earlier.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm aboard, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
You're jumping ahead.
Mr. McCoy?
Thank you.
Jumping ahead.
Mr. Chair, question?
Go ahead.
Back to the six-month extension, if we couldn't get a project done in eighteen months, it seems maybe impossible for it now to be done in six months. Can we, at least, at the minimum, try for a year? Simply because I just think six months might be unreasonable, because if for whatever reason they couldn't initially complete it in eighteen months, only allowing an additional six months may not exactly do it, especially at the rate of $5,000 in addition to whatever other costs.
So, just so I have clarity, the eighteen months is a timeframe to begin construction?
To start, I believe.
Right. So are you referencing for the extension at the end?
Yes.
Five years to be a full-year extension versus six-month increments?
Right.
Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm going back to section thirty-one sixty, number D, or letter D. The sentence reads, the city, we need to strike city, and that should read Community Development Department, or, like I was saying before, if it's going to be the sole discretion of the director, then it would be the Director of Community Development, but it doesn't need to read the city. And follow up?
Go ahead.
On page two. Just where we have, I guess that in HI, we have the numbers that are written out, and then we have them in the drawings, we don't actually need both. So APA format states that you go with written numbers spelled out if it's under ten. So we just want to, I can give you those little changes later. But those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Wiggum? No comments. Mr. Colton?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
This ordinance, will it encompasses the existing site plans that have already been reviewed and are out there? Will it put a deadline or some type of deadline on those that's been sitting for months? That's one comment, or one question. The second comment I have regarding the $5,000, could we possibly look at a scale of from a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, saying it's $2,000, you know, two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, $3,000, a million dollars, five, just something of that nature? And just a comment on basically applicant versus owner. I think the owner should stay, because an applicant could change. If an owner gives an applicant, someone puts in the application, that applicant could change, but the owner is going to still, or the entity who owns that property or that project will still stay regardless. The six months, or moving into a year extension, wouldn't that still? We're trying to eliminate site plan, approved site plans being out there for an extended period of time. Add in another year, or if you're doing two years additional to the five years, that would push it up to seven years compared to six years, it's just a thought, if we're trying to get these projects done timely.
Mr. Sheppard, any comments?
No comments at the time, Mr. Chair.
Ms. James?
No comments at the time.
No comments.
I just have a couple of comments to make. Have you looked at, like China was, or Colton said, a percentage of the value of the project for a fee, as opposed to just the flat $5,000? I mean, for a $5 million project, $5,000 is probably, is palatable, but for a $200,000 project, might be excessive, so.
We might be able to consider a percentage of the initial permit fee, the building permit fee, something along those lines.
Something like that, I think it kind of equalizes the impact on everyone. Somewhere in here, I can't, I'll put my finger on it right now, there's, we mentioned extenuating circumstances. I think we've got to be a little bit more definitive in extenuating circumstances. I mean, it could be a lot of different things, you know, I ran out of money to, you know, act of God. So I think we need to just kind of tighten that up a little bit. And in terms of, in terms of the six-month extensions at the end of five years, frankly, I'm kind of coming from the other side, where Mr. McCoy was. Maybe that's too long, I mean, we've already shepherded this through for five years, and, you know, at some point in time, you know, there's got to be an end, a period at the end of the sentence. Final comment was on item F. If an extension is denied, the Director of Community Development, Environmental Control, applicant may appeal. I think we need to tighten that up. Appeal, I mean, how long do they have to appeal? I mean, is it, you know, a month, two months, three months? But some kind of a finite time, so that we know that once that date is hit, there's, you know, there's no further appeal, so. Those are, those are basically my comments. So just on a housekeeping basis, are you going to incorporate what we've commented on here and bring another draft of this somewhere down the road?
Yes, it's staff intent to incorporate board comments. One point I would like to make, though, being that we have had different opinions on certain items, I don't know if we want to have a consensus vote, whether that's official roll call or raise hands, or if you want to have the next draft that comes before the board, maybe have different options throughout the language. have different options throughout the language. And then at that time, the board can decide which way they feel more comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure. I sense the same wide range of differentials on this, other than the one that Mr. McCoy and I have as far as the timeline. But we're basically saying, once you get your, once you get your approval, you've got essentially eighteen months to start, five years to finish. And if extenuating circumstances are there, you can extend for six and extend for six. In essence, that's what we're saying.
Okay. So maybe even a motion from the board just for the five-year timeframe as a point to start with, and then obviously still work from that point?
Fine.
Mr. Chair, I got a comment before the motion is placed. So where are we looking to go with this? Are we going to go through a couple of drafts? Or are we going to be presented with a draft on the next meeting and expected to vote on it?
There's rarely an expectation for the board to have to act. This particular ordinance really doesn't have an associated timeline that is dictating a move through the process. So I can really bring it back again at the next meeting in a workshop format and have another crack at it that way. And then at the following meeting, or if it needs more time, we can just play by here.
Follow-up?
Go ahead.
The reason I ask is I'm still concerned about the development special magistrate as opposed to city council review or planning and zoning board review. Just like you said, I kind of want to know what the board thinks is appropriate or what the board would recommend. Certainly, I don't think it should be the final decision by the community development. I know you guys are certainly competent, but I just think as another compensating control, it would be best to have a board review. And, you know, this is the first I've heard of a development special magistrate, so I didn't want to put all of our eggs in one basket, you know, with that. So it might be best to have a vote or a motion. And we went through a number of different comments and suggestions that I heard, so I don't know how that would best work.
Well, I think there were a number of comments, but I think maybe the best way to do it, we can give you a motion here today on a couple of the items. But probably need to just incorporate that, make another draft, bring it to the next meeting, and let's, let's attack, attack it. Because, I mean, the faster we could get this in place, the better off we're going to be for future development. And I don't believe you addressed Mr. Colton's question. Once, let's assume this gets passed, are site plans that were approved or already approved fall into this, into this ordinance? Or are they grandfathered in with something else?
The intent, staff's current intent is to not encumber previous approvals unless there was a specific condition with a timeframe within the approval resolution. So staff's current intent is to not have this count towards any of these resolutions that approve the site plan. So if the site plan was approved by city council previously, then this would not pertain to that resolution.
Is it possible, in that sense, to send some type of notification to those site plans that we would like for you to finish this plan or this building or project based on our criteria, new criteria that we have in place? I mean, something of that nature. I know we possibly can't force them to do it, but, you know, speed up the process.
The city's always in a unique position where we can make a request similar to that. However, if there was already a development order or resolution approving the site plan with certain criteria and conditions, the property owner may have legal rights to adhere to those conditions. So we can make the request, however, I don't think we'd have any sort of enforcement mechanism or any way of having them adhere to the new language.
Chair, follow-up?
Go ahead.
Follow-up to section thirty-one six-F. It was commented regarding the appeal extension, that, you know, there should be a number that's placed on the appeal. Now, what if applicant appealed, pretty much is running out of time, appeals, and even with that appeal, they still can't complete that project within that timeframe? What happens? What's the language? Or is there a language set aside to address that? And how would we as a city address it if that applicant has spent thousands of dollars on that project? What, what then?
I think that's a really good observation, and I think that I'll personally go back and look and see, even if it's clarifying the fact that the intent is to cease construction or if the intent is to potentially allow for an extension, but to have specific language in here that really describes what the process is if that situation were to arise. Because it's a very good question.
And just, just to comment on that, I see the potential litigation that the city could face if an applicant would put X amount of dollars into a project, and now the city's saying, "I can't." I think we need to really address that for it to really have teeth. Okay. And just a suggestion, and the city could possibly say for a project, you need to show that you have X amount of dollars already in escrow, possibly, to finish this particular project, so you don't, we don't get into that problem.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Question that almost goes to what you just said, Mr. Colton. The valuation that I heard Mr. Colton suggest and also Mr. Canooty suggest, how does that work or how would that work? Because are we valuing the construction cost? Or are we evaluating the potential value of the property upon completion? Because the market drives that. I mean, I actually met with the applicant of, I think, the Emmerich early part of the year, and what they explained was they couldn't complete the project because of the economic, the, the, thanks, Ms. James, the downturn, and that was back in the, I want to say two thousand and, I can't remember exactly, two thousand and five or six or something like that. And he, he explained that he wanted to hang on to those coins that he did have because he wasn't sure what the market was going to be able to sustain this type of project, which makes perfectly good business sense. If there's indicators that the financial situation may not be the same in the next year or two, you're going to have issues with financing and definitely with valuation of property. So, you know, just from a business perspective, I'm just curious how we can possibly value our property or value construction costs, because it all fluctuates, you know, so.
Mr. Gagnon, isn't there a value placed on the permit?
Right, but my suggestion would be, as far as the building permit application goes, that's evaluation based off of the estimated cost of work itself. So if the situation were to arise where construction was initiated on the development itself, I guess depending on the application and building plan presented, if it wasn't a full application set or full plans, then staff wouldn't be able to evaluate the full percentage of work necessarily from that application. So there is a dollar amount assigned to building permit applications, but I think that at this point, we should, staff should go back and look and see if there's some way to configure that to either capture a percentage or maybe even if it's a percentage up to a certain dollar amount. So that way, if there's, you know, a multimillion-dollar project, then even one percent of that can be a substantial fee versus a single-family residence that would be a very small cost. So I think the staff can go back and look at different alternatives and provide that to the planning and zoning board.
To comment on Mr. Colton's comment about when time runs out, okay? That's really going to be a situation that if this is, once this is implemented, that somebody's going to know about from day one, that they've got five years and two six-month extensions, say, to complete the project. And, you know, what do we do afterwards? Well, you know, it's a pretty common business practice in that if you fall out of that, you do have some kind of ongoing fee to pay on a regular basis that just starts to accrue until you finish the project. And in this case, I guess it's to get a CO. So, I mean, that's something to look at as the addressing the situation when all the appeals and so forth are done and the applicant or owner does not perform, so. Now, you said you're looking for a motion. What, give me some guidance. The only thing I can think of that we could make a motion on is, is the five years and the two extensions.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
If, I mean, if you, if Mr. Gagnon is looking for a motion, that would be fine. I would, you know, if the board could kind of just make it, if you want to make a motion, just like a motion for direction, something like that, because, you know, I mean, there may be some changes in the language and stuff like that. So I think Mr. Gagnon is really looking for kind of unifying direction from the board, so when, you know, when he comes back with the, you know, with the next draft, at least it'll be closer to kind of what the majority of the board is looking at. So I don't want you to, you know, I'd rather you not make like, here's a motion we're directing you, this is the language, you have to come back, just a motion for direction. This is what a majority of the board is looking at, and this is what we would recommend you come back with.
So, if I might, a motion that says something to the effect that we've reviewed, discussed, and commented on thirty-one sixty, and we're basically in favor of the outline and the concept, and would like to see another draft with our, all of our comments included. Something like that?
I, I mean, from my job as board counsel, I would prefer that motion, Mr. Gagnon. They want something more specific, but I guess I'm just trying to, you know, give staff enough leeway where they can come back and say, "Look, this is what we, you know, I'm sure Mr. Gagnon, he's heard your comments," and, you know, he can try to come back with something that, you know, is appropriate for the board.
If I may, I agree with Mr. Shad. It doesn't have to be specific, but maybe just a general board guidance, as Mr. Canooty had stated previously.
Okay. Okay, so basically, while we're looking for a motion to say something to the effect that the board has reviewed and commented on this, we like the general concept of it, and we are now, would like to see the second draft implementing all of our comments and changes. Mr. Colton?
Just one other possible thing that could be added in our comments is to add some wording, and I don't see it if it is, excuse me, transferability. If an owner sells, transfer, grants, his ownership to someone else, I think that also needs to be a part of this ordinance. Or, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'll be happy to go back and look through it. If I remember correctly, it's, the ordinance itself is based more off of the approval resolution, but staff can definitely go back through and look and see if the ownership of that changes, does that impact any of the specific criteria in the ordinance?
Okay.
Anyone want to take a shot at the motion?
Mr. Chair?
I guess you never ask for volunteers, right?
That was a lie. Mr. Chair, I move that we take all of that stuff that you just said a moment ago. Mr. Chair, I move that we direct staff to go back and make suggestions based on the comments we heard here tonight. I think that's why I'm asking, right?
Do you want to incorporate the fact that we're in general agreement?
About?
The concept. What, what we're trying to do is put a, put a finite end date on it.
I'm afraid I can't say that. I, I'm just not understanding. A finite end date on the six months?
No, no, five years, five years.
With the two additional?
With the two additional six months.
Well, Mr. Colton, if I'm correct, I think I heard him say two years at one point, right?
No, I said that two years if we were to extend it one year like he was suggested, an additional one year, push it from five years to seven years. That was my comment on that.
He was commenting about your suggestion of a year.
Yeah. I'm definitely confused now, Mr. Canooty.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that we direct staff to make the, encompass those comments and suggestions made by members and have a finite end date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Glaskins?
Motion by Mr. McCoy, second by Mr. Colton.
Call the roll.
Ryan Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Jonathan McCoy?
Yes.
Senator Rick, Margaret is the second?
Yes.
Edward Canooty?
Yes.
We're going to move the motion approved.
Okay. Moving on to new business, item B.
Yes, tonight, under new business, letter B, after discussion at last planning and zoning board meeting, the request to provide the board with chapter twenty-seven, article two, division two, and that describes the planning board itself and specific duties and role of the board. So the code itself and the ordinance was originally approved in nineteen fifty-seven and has not been amended since that time. So I want to bring this information for the board. Again, this is just a workshop to discuss the existing language, discuss potential improvements or amendments to the language. And as discussed with the previous language under item A, there is no specific timeline associated with this item moving forward, so we can review this as needed.
Chair?
Mr. James?
Or did you have further direction from him on how we're getting ready to proceed?
On this one?
Right.
No, I did not.
Okay. Okay, so I just had a question, so if this was...
But one moment, I think you just want an open discussion on this, correct? Start?
That's the current intent, yes.
Okay. That's just an open discussion.
So I'm looking at the language, you said it was last revised back in the fifties. So at that time, were there two separate boards instead of a P and Z board? It's just, it's known as planning board?
I think that at some point throughout history, the title of the planning and zoning board was changed from just planning board to planning and zoning board. I have never found information on that exactly, but this section of the code, the title planning board, is referenced by staff for the planning and zoning board currently.
Okay, because it does mention another board called the planning board. Okay.
The code itself describes more the functionality of the board, even though board as a whole right now is referred to as a zoning board, planning and zoning board. If a plat were to come forth, planning and zoning board, according to this code section, then the board would be the plating board.
Mr. Chair? Mr. McCoy?
And I thank you for letting me get first stab.
And I thank you for letting me get first stab at it before we start making recommendations and suggestions. I just wanna understand, how are we going to handle this? Are we gonna do it similar to the last ordinance that we just, I guess the last ordinance item that we just had? Because 2731 describes the function of city council, so are we making suggestion as to how city council should do the appointment of the board? Or how does that work? Because?
Yeah, there's no limitations as far as suggestions from the planning zoning board. This, this item is different than the item brought before you for item A, because that was, I guess, essentially a staff-initiated ordinance, while this was discussed by the planning zoning board last meeting. So, it's something that, you know, I personally feel this language is outdated, 1957, it needs to be amended, so it's just a matter of what suggestions the planning zoning board has to make. The, the second part, the second section within this ordinance kind of also answers that question, where it talks about the advisory status of the planning zoning board. So, but of course, the planning zoning board can make any suggestions or comments, however, the city council is the final decision-making authority. So, I would really, if I was sitting as a planning zoning board member, use the opportunity to just come up with any creative comments you may have, and, and see if there's a general discussion that can ensue, and see if we can come up with some ways to move forward.
Follow up?
Go ahead.
And before we actually get into it, is there a way that we can do this, that way we can compass all of the comments, that way they can actually be formulated as opposed to what happened the last time? Because if you're, if you're really, if we're really gonna do something, I think every single line of this ordinance has to be changed, and there has to be a better way than what we did on the last item. But every single line in this, in this ordinance is antiquated, everyone. So, you know, at least I would hope that we can have a dialogue about how do we then tackle this, because this is a really big, this is a really big ordinance.
Yeah, this is, but I believe, just, I believe we've got both a voice recording and the, and the verbatim minutes, so I think Mr. Gagnon has access to all of our comments. Is that my correct?
That's true, but if I may, Chair Canute, there will be some interaction between sections, but being that there are multiple sections, one method the board could utilize is just tackling it a section at a time, and then, once, once a section is thoroughly reviewed by the board and everyone feels as if the comments have concluded and there's general consensus, then it could be done in almost a motion form, or if there's a specific item that comes up, and board member A feels the time span should be five years, and board member B feels the time span should be 10 years, then maybe right at that moment in time, if the board so chooses, they can make a motion to at least attempt to lay groundwork, and the motion can be, to provide it again in draft form, so it's not solidifying any specific timeframe or any specific language, which, you know, our attorney has advised against, and I agree with, but to just keep it in, in draft format and just use it as a discussion tool.
One other comment, I mean, in essence, what you're saying, I think what Mr. McCoy is saying, is that you're asking the planning and zoning board to completely rewrite this ordinance that was passed in 57 to 2015 standards. Is that, is that the core? Is that the task?
I, I don't believe personally that every line has to be rewritten, there may be substantial changes that need to be done, for sure, but every line may not have to be revised or amended. So, if the planning board feels as if every line does, then we can proceed in that fashion. However, if there are just certain amendments or additions or deletions that would bring it closer to a better functioning ordinance, then surely we want, we wanna improve the ordinance as is now.
Yeah, I'm personally more inclined to think we need to do an improvement rather than a complete, total overhaul. There is some antiquated wording in, in here that we can, we can address. So, but, just so we're all clear, the end game on this is to submit a new ordinance to city council with our recommended changes.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So then, and I noticed this, and this is what I really would like everyone's attention on this, because now, if we do do that, Mr. Canute, how is it then presented to city council? Because just like the, the board appointments, which I don't have a problem with, but I kinda thought it was a little unfair to our existing alternate members that they would just pass over, and it went by so quick, I don't even think the city council really understood that they had members that had already served over two years, that they just bypassed when they appointed the two new members, and it's all because how it was presented to them. And I can't remember exactly how the wording was, but Ms. McKinney says, okay, do you wanna just appoint these two members in place of those that were removed? Absolutely. But I don't think they realized that we had two members on the board that had been serving in an alternate capacity, and in many cases, didn't have voting rights. So, you know, in all fairness to those existing alternate members, if it would have been presented in the fashion that says, you know, we wanna appoint these two members, but keep in mind, we have alternate members that has been serving in this capacity. So, when it comes to this ordinance, when it gets to city council, are they gonna go line by line and say, well, we don't, we don't agree that our authority to appoint a member from every district should be removed, we still want that authority, but keep everything else? You know, so it's all in how you present it. Usually, the ordinance is just presented to them, they don't make any edits. Typically, they don't. They usually adopt the recommendation of staff, and that's it. And, but that's just what I'm curious about, because one, one thing that they don't agree with could potentially reject the whole ordinance, and then what do we do, have to go back and rewrite this whole thing over? And that's why I said every line has to be visited, because if they do reject the ordinance, is there any language or provision that we're trying to put into this new language that would require that when a project is not approved by city council, or some, some step along the way, does it then go back? Or if language changes in the process, then does it go back? So, you know, there's so many cases of, of confusion and ambiguity that I've seen just sitting up here about things that could potentially happen, like I think Mr. Colton pointed out in the last item. I mean, you know, you almost have to account for the unexpected, because guess what? It happens, just like we had a site plan that's been outstanding for, what, over seven years? So. It's just my thought. It's just my thought, I mean, you know, I don't wanna consume all of the terms and same thing, but I just think we need to have a really good understanding of what we expect to happen, and what we can potentially expect city council to adopt.
Well, I think, I think the first order of business, I, I think you make a very valid point on how it's presented at the city council meetings. And staff makes their presentation, maybe it's, maybe this board has to, has to participate in that presentation at the council meeting. I'm not sure what the answer is, but presentation at the city council meeting, so they understand not only that we passed it, but why we passed.
Findings.
Yeah.
So, can we certainly agree that a lot of times that when we make these recommendations, it should also include specific findings? That way, city council can look at a, a white-page document, so to speak, and say, well, the planning and zoning board suggests this, this, and this, not, not just a P and Z recommended approval. Yeah, we recommended approval with these certain conditions, or, you know, supporting these items, or something like that.
Actually, Mr. McCoy makes an interesting point. Maybe each approval that we send to city council after we write the, after it's done, should have a one-page bullet item summary sheet that this is approved because of these reasons, or disapproved because of these reasons. So, I mean, I, I think something short, sweet, and to the point. So, something for us to think about in terms of taking the next step to making sure that if we approve something, you know, we get our, we get our voice really heard.
If I may, Chair Canute, there were multiple questions and comments that came up, so I'll do my best to answer them. To go back to the planning zoning board member nomination item, staff presented all the information to city council, it was presented at multiple city council meetings, there was a specific line within the agenda item itself, which did say it was customary to promote alternate members to permanent member spots. So, that information was provided, however, the city council, again, at their discretion, can appoint whoever they choose to the planning zoning board. Additionally, with this language, this was not something that was initiated by the city council. The city council did not direct staff to bring it before the planning zoning board, so there is a possibility that it's brought to the city council after the planning zoning board works on it, and the city council chooses to not approve it, amend a part of it, change it, really at their discretion. So, I think that it would be best for the city to try to move forward to a point where we come up with the best language possible, and present it in a manner where it is appealing to approve it. However, with each agenda item, there's an agenda item summary sheet, which typically summarizes, maybe not in bullet point format, but succinct, succinct summary of the item itself as presented to the council. And as always, the council can ask city staff prior to the meeting, any questions they have about an item. You know, if the planning zoning board chooses to, to move forward with a review, this was really brought forth by the zoning board due to previous comments.
Well, I, I think, you know, as far as the city council, but I think we're getting off track on this right now. I mean, basically, what's on the table is, do we want to review the planning 2731 and make our comments? But prior to that, I think we should come up with the methodology on how we're gonna do it, 'cause I think Mr. McCoy is right, it's a, it's a complicated document, and it, it addresses a lot of things. And, again, we're, we're not as a, as a seven-member board going to go through it line by line, but we can go through it section by section, make any comments, and start from there.
And even if it was approved as a discussion item within our agenda previously, but perhaps there isn't momentum on the board, or perhaps the board itself, as, as a whole board, doesn't want to delve into this, so perhaps a motion to proceed is needed, but that's, that's up to the board itself.
Well, why don't we just do a show of hands? How many members of the board think that we should take a look at this and comment on it and suggest any changes? All those in favor, raise your hand.
I'm not, I'm not even sure I understand, can you repeat it?
What I'm saying is, he's saying, does the board even want to address this? I'm saying, informally, I wanted to just do a straw poll to see if the board is interested in addressing this. Okay? So, my, my question is, everyone on the board who is interested in addressing this item, raise your hand.
Mr. Chair.
We have one, two, three, four.
Chair.
Mr. Colton, go ahead.
I think this, this particular item does need addressing, because as I can see, there's specific dates that have been outdated, yes. It needs to be addressed, but if we, as a board, are gonna sit here and go line or section by section, it could take us all night and then some. My suggestion I would like to present is to, just as the previous ordinance was presented to us, with lined out on the line, and additional line, I think staff knows and see that there's some outdated wording that could be replaced or added, I would like to suggest that staff do the same thing with the, this particular section. Come back. We make our comments on what staff sees, or your city attorney sees, added, and it's not gonna take one or two sit downs. We'll make our comments based on what staff sees already. Then staff will bring it back with our comments, and if it takes one, two, three, or four sessions, I think that would be, be better served with this whole section than just us sitting here going back and forth with different comments, and there's no specifics. That would be my suggestion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Barber?
Just a point of clarification, are you suggesting that we only review what staff places on the document before us, or are you also, in your statement, including things that they may have missed?
Are you directing that to me or to Mr. Colton?
Mr. Colton.
Mr. Colton, okay.
Oh, great.
Basically, he's saying, do you want, you want this board just to address what staff suggests, or are you suggesting that it's open for, for the board to make any alterations they see necessary?
The board makes the alterations, but staff is more knowledgeable in what's outdated in a way that they'll, 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 they're presenting to us as a board. We then have the authority or the right to go over and say, well, staff, you may have put this wording, I would suggest you put in, instead of may, shall, and we can all comment on, on, on each section that way. But if we're gonna try to pick out line for line ourselves here, it'll be a much longer process than staff presenting it to us first. We then would make our comments, suggestions, back to staff. Staff would then bring it back to us with our comments if we, we are, you know, we vote on it at that time. But we have a right to, to comment on what staff presents, but I think staff should be the one that outlines it first, as far as what needs to be, or what's outdated, what could be changed, and bring it to us. We bring it back, we take it back, we look at it, and present it back to staff for them to rewrite it to us, and we go from there.
Okay, if I, Mr. Barber, if I heard him correctly, I think he's saying, the starting point would be staff to make the recommended changes that they see, then it would be this board to make whatever recommended changes each member wanted. So, you would be able to address any issue in there?
That answers my question.
Good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, just for some clarification, listening to the city council, when I came on board, the council was adamant who they wanted to represent in their district, and there was a couple alternates that they passed over and brought their particular person in. And, and as I watched council, as they wrestle with this, I think they pretty much wanted to, you know, put the person that they thought, you know, would represent their district. So, you know, I just really listened to them sometime, how their, the changes, whatever, they're pretty much adamant in who they want to represent them. So, what you're saying is that you wanna change it, and they'd be consistent with the change?
I, I think that's maybe two different things. I think what staff brought this to us, the, the majority of the board says they'd like to address this.
Okay.
Okay? So, what Mr. Colton is suggesting is that staff go through this, remove, strike the antiquated items, and the, and make suggestions as to how to update it. At that point in time, it comes back to the board, and every member has the ability then to incorporate their comments into it, and then we would go back to staff, and they would incorporate all those comments, board comments.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I have a couple comments of what we were discussing tonight. Concerning the number that we got? Concerning the members that we got on the board now and the alternates, I was under the impression that an alternate could be moved to a permanent position regardless of which district it's from. If one of us said we're going to move out of town, we have to leave, that person takes our place. Or said we just decide we no longer want to be on the board, that person takes our place regardless of what district they live in. That's the way it's been in the past. All alternates were there until someone was removed by you, Mr. McKenna, because of lack of time coming to the meeting, not showing up to the meeting. You know, those are the things that brought alternates into the table on being one of us. Now, the city council wants to put everyone from their district, you know, put someone from their district. Now, the alternates might not be from their district if Mr. McKenna decides that this person in District One, Two, or Three is not showing up to the meeting, so we're going to take them off. So that's what's been done in the past, but, you know, this has been some confusion lately. That's why it took them five months to nominate us now. And I think it really, really needs to be looked at by you and Mr. McKenna and some of the other city councils, so that it can be right. Because I wouldn't want to be an alternate, sitting up here for three years, and somebody being, coming in, three or four people coming in, outside coming in, and they start out. That's kind of embarrassing to me. And I think it's something we all need to think about, and I think it's something we need to look at. Now, we've got the red memo. We are an advisory board. We are the strongest board in the city. When the planners bring something to us, put it on the table and let us review it, our job is to advise on certain items. Not tell them to take away, but advise on certain items. Then if they agree, those items will be changed. But I don't think we have the right to sit up here and set up an audience, any ruling that the planners don't want. I don't think we have the right to do that. I don't think we should do it. I think we should take our job and what we were put up here for, to advise. I thought that's what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Wiegand.
Chair.
Yes.
I heard a couple of comments tonight, and as an alternate, one of the alternates that have been a part of the board for the last two years or so, and I heard Mr. Gag, Mr. McCoy actually brought it up first, and then I heard Mr. Gag and say that it was presented in the material. I actually watched that meeting, and presentation definitely was everything. It was not presented, may have been in the paperwork, but the alternates were not represented. It was not presented in the discussion to say that it's usually customary, at least I did not hear that, to say that it was customary that an alternate be promoted first. I think it is a slap in the face, and I wasn't going to address it or say anything, because, you know, the decision had already been made. But I think it is a slap in the face to sit on the board for two, you know, years or plus and not be given that opportunity to take one of those positions and show up and have very limited ability to be involved and to vote. Our hope in moving forward, in any recommendation that we, that, you know, this board decides to make, that consideration is given to the fact that you do have alternates. And the city council, this board, should not fail to overlook them, should, and that person should be considered or given the opportunity to represent as a regular board member. I just wanted to put that out, because as an alternate, and as a person who has served my time, volunteer time, I do think it was, you know, really disrespectful, and I think it could have been represented much better in saying that it's customary and that you do have alternates that have been in that capacity, and maybe they should be given the consideration. I don't think that was mentioned. Like I said, it may have been brought up in the backup, in the paperwork, but it was not mentioned in the meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that. I, you know, I'm not angry, I'm not hostile or anything like that to any of the members that were appointed, but I do believe that in the future, it really should be considered, whether it's me or another alternate, because it does affect, you know, a person's tenure and how they want to continue to serve the city.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
To Mr. Jackson, you're absolutely right. I watched the meeting too. And if the members that were here prior to this meeting will remember, when we had the election of chair and vice chair, I remember you specifically saying, Mr. Canoe, because they didn't act, there's no reason for us not to act. So we still have to do our duty. And with that, I put a motion on the floor that we recommend to city council that we appoint Ms. Jackson and Mr. Hamilton as regular members, as opposed to allowing the alternate members to be appointed, because you're right, it was not said. I watched the meeting a couple times, and we went over this for five months. And the important part that you have to remember, the reason why we went over it for five months, because there's no policy in place. That's why this language has to be changed. Because every time, I remember the very first meeting back in January, city council directed staff to go back and develop a plan to attrition members off of the board. That went right out of the window, because there's no policy. And it does say a lot to the volunteers that you got on the board. At best, I was at least expecting to hear, thank you, Ms. Brooks, thank you, Ms. Davis, for your service on the board. Not even that. And it takes a lot to go through this every, well, biweekly or monthly, to set aside time and study to prepare for these meetings, come into the meetings, make, or have a spirited discussion and debate, and make a recommendation. And then, you know, a lot of the times, it doesn't even make it to city council, because it gets filtered through by staff, and they decide to present what they decide to present. So my motion's on the floor that we recommend to council to appoint the alternate members as regular members, and then those two recent regular members be placed as alternates.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is the motion clear to everybody? Good, okay. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Boskew.
Motion by Mr. McCoy, second by Mr. Wiegand. Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiegand?
Yes.
Argy Shepherd?
No.
Renee James?
Yes.
Cedric McCoy?
Yes.
Cedric Barber, the second?
No.
Andrew Canoni?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
I think the lively discussion we just went through kind of reinforces the fact that, as a planning board, we need to address this document. And I think Mr. Colton's suggestion was a good one, a good starting point and process to do it. So I'd like to see a motion to address it. Yes.
Chair. I'd like to make a motion that staff composes the first draft of the planning and zoning board ordinance, and also presents by email any board recommendations at that time.
Do we have a second?
Second with questions and clarity. If you can repeat that.
That the motion is for staff to compose the first draft of the ordinance and present, not include in the ordinance, but present any recommendations emailed to staff at that time, at the time that it's brought to the board. So like, if I email Jeff and say, you know, I'm proposing these changes, I don't want it included in staff's draft, I just want it available so the other board members will have it to view.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I actually seconded it already.
Okay, but you said you had questions.
Well, I did. I just wanted to make sure you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Mr. McCoy. Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiegand?
Yeah.
Argy Shepherd?
No.
Renee James?
Yes.
Cedric McCoy?
Yes.
Cedric Barber, the second?
Yes.
Andrew Canoni?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
When, Mr. Gag, when do you think we would see this again?
I would like to present the draft at our next planning zoning board meeting.
Okay.
It'll still be a plenary draft.
Sure. Yeah, I think we'll probably go through a couple of drafts on it before we get it pinned down to where we want it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And just before we move on, I want to add that we can also clarify the dates in which the planning and zoning board meets, because there was no official action that designated the fourth Thursday of the month as a planning and zoning board meeting. However, the attendance roster was presented to the city council, and they identified that, you know, people missed this meeting when there was really, this meeting was designated as a workshop and an additional meeting. So, you know, there was really no requirement for the fourth Thursday, because if you look down, right when you enter the city hall, it gives you a list of the meetings, it says the second Thursday. There was no indication until 2013 that you started going to the fourth Thursday, and that's kind of a little bit inaccurate to put that a person is absent when it's not really a regular meeting. And what I do remember is staff saying, well, this is the attendance record. Well, if it's not a regular meeting, if you didn't plan on it, you got appointed, coming on the fourth Thursday, then now to be held accountable for not coming is a little bit unusual, I would say.
Well, I think that's a suggestion that can go into the revision of this, pinning down. It does say we have to have a meeting every month, and we don't have a meeting every month also. So that was one requirement that we could address in this. But I think in Section 2731, when you're going through it, where created board members, quorum, terms, vacancies, and removal, might be the place where we can take a look at the suggestion or the requirement, whichever it is, that when a seat is vacated, first shot goes to alternate one, alternate two, and the new members come on in the, as alternates. So, but that's something that we can incorporate when we do revisit this. So, okay. Any other comments on the comments that we commented on? Okay, moving on to Item Eight, public comments. There are no public comments. The correspondence, Mr. Gag.
Yes, there was correspondence again from Mr. Shet that was referenced at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if you'd like to just provide a brief summary of the meeting minutes at this time, or how you'd like to proceed.
I can. Is it, it's up to the board? Do you, just very quickly, do you want me to just kind of summarize this in two seconds or less?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I expect five.
Okay. Basically, regarding the appearing by telephone, Ms. Stubbs had previously sent you a memo, and the law has not changed on that. So basically, unless there is a medical necessity that prevents you from attending the meeting, you would have to attend the meeting. That is the only exception, and then there's even certain requirements on that, where, well, there has to be a quorum present and different things like that. So that memo very clearly spelled out the requirements on that. As far as whether or not an alternate member may make a motion, basically, an alternate member is a substitute member, and an alternate does not have the same powers as a member. They can't make a motion, they can't vote unless they are fulfilling the spot of a member. And that's why, if you look out throughout Robert's Rules of Order and even the Code of Ordinances, it talks about members. And so unless an alternate is filling that position of a member, an alternate would not be given those same abilities to make motions or to vote. You know, alternate members can participate in discussions, and that's pretty common in a lot of boards. Also, as far as whether or not, on, you know, going to the question, even if a member is a member or a resident of the city, if the member has a voting conflict because of, you know, that they would, certain financial gains or losses would endure to their benefit or to their relatives, which is a very broad definition under the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics definition of that, that member would have to abstain from voting. And what the Palm Beach, and what the ordinance says from the Commission on Ethics is basically, they shall abstain from voting and not participate in any matter. And it goes further to say that not only will do the, you know, they do not, you know, they can't take any action to influence others to vote a certain way. So therefore, that's been interpreted, and I actually called the, you know, someone in the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics, they have interpreted that to mean that the person, you know, cannot speak in front of the board. That's the same way I would interpret that language as well, because you would be participating in some form or manner. So therefore, you know, in order for the member to, you know, to not risk a Commission on Ethics complaint, I would advise that member to step aside and to either sit over to decide or sit in the audience and not, you know, not say a word, not do anything that someone could interpret that to mean that, you know, they're trying to, you know, express their displeasure or enjoyment as far as what the board is doing. And that's kind of my quick summary of that.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You know, when these developers, especially big developers, come in to do some billing, some of them want to send their lawyers come right to our home, you know, each one of us, and talk with us individually. Is that legal?
Yes, that's okay, because on the development, you know, it's, you know, on the approval, it'd be a quasi-judicial hearing, and you would disclose, just Item Number Four, disclosure by board members, and then adoption by the agenda. The disclosure by board members would be, you're disclosing, like I had a conversation with a representative from so-and-so project, and this is kind of what he talked, we talked about, or he explained the project. And so you would need to disclose that, but yes, you can speak to them. You aren't required to, and you don't have to. I mean, it's entirely up to you, but it's not prohibited.
I just wanted to be aware, we get in trouble for letting them come in our home and talk to us.
As long as you disclose it at the meeting, that you had such and such discussion with so-and-so, and this is kind of give the general overview of what was discussed, I don't see where there would be any issue with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Item C under General Discussion, nomination of Vice Chair. As you know, Ms. Brooks was Vice Chair, and she was not reappointed, so we have an opening for Vice Chair.
Quick nomination of that?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Ms. James as co-chair.
Vice Chair.
Come here, you're right, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second for another nomination?
I'd like to nominate myself.
Okay. Okay, we have two nominations for Vice Chair.
Just for a point of clarification, I know Ms. James was nominated. Do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Canoe, I would suggest doing a roll call vote for both individuals nominated.
For?
Each individual nominated.
And if I can, just a point of clarification there, Mr. Chairman, I guess in the past, is whoever gets the most votes on the particular nomination becomes the Vice Chair. So if you vote one, you know, so if you vote once for one individual, then you would not be allowed to vote. And, and if I can just point a clarification there, Mr. Chairman, I guess in the past is whoever gets the most votes on the particular nomination becomes the vice chair. So if you vote one, you know, so if you vote once for one individual, then you would not be allowed to vote. Or, you know, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how that would.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to think about by myself, you know. Uh, do we just have a, a, a voice vote for, for each individual? Or do we have to make a motion? My question is, do we have to make a motion for each individual and then vote on it?
I, historically, by default, um, when members do vote for an item that's been nominated, it is kind of an even, either or situation. So if you vote yes for the member, um, then you're obviously supporting that member. There's really nothing that prohibits you from voting yes to two members. However, if you're not in favor of voting yes for the first member, you would probably vote no.
I guess if you're from Chicago, right?
So, I, I guess that if you want to proceed for it that way, and then I guess whoever gets the most votes would be the vice chair. Okay.
Okay, so clarifies everybody's in, in agreement. What we're going to do is put Ms. James, Mr. Colton's name up for vice chair, and individually, we're going to vote for one of the nominees.
Mr. Chair, is the floor closed now? Because I was gonna make a nomination.
Oh, no, it's not.
I was gonna nominate Ms. Jackson, but we can't have vice chairs alternate during that.
No.
Oh, gosh. That's why we need to change our rules. That's exactly why we need to revisit. So I guess I will draw. I'll make a, a nomination for Ms. Shepherd as vice chair.
Ida Khan.
Okay. Oh, no other nominations? Floor's closed for nominations. Okay. Mr. Velazquez?
If I may, just to go sequentially by, um, the way that the board members were nominated.
Right.
So the first roll call vote will be for, um, Ms. James, and the second will be for Mr. Colton.
Is that the way you want to do it?
That's what I suggested. Yeah, yes, Your Honor. I think that would be the best way to go, is Ms. James would be first. So your, your vote would either be a yes or a no, and then Mr. Colton would also be going. Whoever has the most votes, um, would be the vice chair.
My only, my only question of that process is, there are two individual motions. So, I mean, there's nothing to preclude one person for voting yes for both motions in that's, in that sense, you know? So we're not gonna, we're not gonna get a definitive answer, or we potentially can't, would not get a definitive answer that way.
Or you could just do a raise your hand and say who, uh, prefer, you know, who is, uh, in favor of Ms. James? And then, you know, you could count the number of hands raised, and then say who is in favor of Mr. Colton, count the hands raised, and...
We, we have, uh, Mr. Velazquez made another suggestion. If the board chooses, um, instead of having an open motion for each individual, just have each individual board member choose one or the other. So do you...
How we, I'm unclear.
For example, um, Mr. Knutty, when your name is called, you would either choose Ms. James or Mr. Colton.
Okay.
And that would probably be the best way, you know, it's just say the name of the person.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I particularly like the roll call, but that's just my thought.
Well, that's what he's suggesting, a roll call and you...
For each individual person, because I really want to vote for both of them. You know why? Because our rules don't establish it, and that's why we need to revisit our rules.
Well, I, I think that point's clear, we need to re-establish the rules. Uh, but we're here with a mission to get a vice chair.
Okay.
So, okay, your message is clear, the rules have to be revisited. Let's not, let's not kind of, uh, try to carry it into this, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I make one suggestion? I saw this, I think, once before. Can we just write your, you know, names on a piece of paper? And have, um, Mr. Gag to read out, to see who, you know, has it been before? Well, after you, you know, after, well, they did it this once before, I don't know if you remember.
I don't, I don't remember that, but I mean, uh, I, I guess I'm okay either way. I mean, uh, but I, I think, I think our attorney's suggestion of just calling out the names and say who you wrote it for. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Velazquez.
Brian Colton?
Brian Colton.
Julius Wiegand?
Renee James.
Marcus Schaper?
Brian Colton.
Renee James?
Renee James.
Cedric McCoy?
Renee James.
Cedric Barber II?
Renee James.
Andrew Knutty?
Renee James.
Five votes for Ms. James, two vote, uh, votes for Mr. Colton.
Okay. Congratulations.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Are we on comments now?
Uh, we are planning and zoning board comments.
Okay, if I could take a stab.
Um...
I almost forgot. Mr. Gag, can we have, uh, find out what's going on with Cunningham Park? I did see that on the project list, but it's now restricted from anybody coming in to access in the park. But there's not been any construction, and, gosh, I haven't seen anything. There's been nothing there for the whole entire, uh, none of 2015, and I want to mention, say, some part of 2014, but, um... Did you have any information, because it says plans to be developed?
Uh, yes, I can provide a brief summary. Staff does have a meeting early next week to discuss current status of projects and plans being developed for the park. At a recent city council meeting, there was a resolution to appoint a specific consulting firm to develop plans, and there was a certain dollar allocated to develop those plans. So, prior to or during the next planning and zoning board meeting, I'll have a more comprehensive summary of the current status of the project, but I know that those plans are currently being developed.
Follow-up. So did we, did we dispose of the plans that we had presented to us? Are those no longer?
Um, I think that they have been utilized as preliminary guidelines to develop final plans from actual building plans. However, plans will come back for the planning and zoning board. Input from the planning and zoning board will be factored into any plan design. So they haven't been discarded completely, however, they're not to be followed a hundred percent.
Okay, so has the consultant been identified?
Yes.
Or selected? So will planning and zoning be presenting the project, or will the consultant be presenting it?
Uh, the project will be presented more likely by the consultant themselves, or at least have them in attendance. It is a city-initiated project, so whichever staff member is most well-versed on the project development itself will be in attendance, whether that's someone from our Parks and Rec Department, or if, um, I'm selected, or if another individual's selected, then it'll proceed to be presented by the planning and zoning board by that individual.
Okay, great, because I just didn't know what happened. I know we had heard this last year, and I haven't seen or heard anything else. Also, the motion that we made about the board appointees, how do we, how can we expect that that'll be disseminated from this point?
What I will do, I will put in a memo format to my direct supervisor, the motion that was made. And then her role would be to provide that to the city manager, or ask director from the city manager of how that information would be disseminated to council members.
Okay. So, this is exactly why our rules need to be revisited, because for whatever reason, if that doesn't happen, then our motion or our request really falls on deaf ears. Because I know, I, I can recall us making motions before, and, you know, like it never gets heard. I asked about the item, and several times I asked, I know I heard Ms. James mentioning before, the budget appropriation, um, for, I'm sorry, not the budget appropriation, the capital improvement recommendations. I want to find out what's gonna happen with that, or do you have any information about that?
I believe, and it was brought up historically, um, I made the suggestion to have a motion from the boards as a whole. I, I guess as, uh, capital improvements are approved by council, or brought to the city council, the information could also be provided for planning and zoning board. However, that hasn't occurred, to my knowledge, in at least eight years.
Okay, um, so in essence, uh, the motion could wind up getting a desk veto at city manager or assistant city manager. Is that correct?
Well, if, if the information is available, and the board requests the information, then staff can provide the board with the information. However, similar to our discussion of section twenty-seven, the city council can choose to take the advice and direction from planning and zoning board, or they can choose not to. So, being that the city council didn't direct staff to do this, or didn't direct the planning and zoning board to do this, it's difficult for me to tell the board for certain how the council will react to it.
Well, would...
But I think, I, I think Mr. McCoy's point, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if they're going to reject it, we would like it to be on the agenda, and then the city council say, no. As opposed to it just kind of, you know, drifting away and disappearing.
Well, you know, I, I'm almost at the point, Mr. Chair, about a little civil disobedience, because we make recommendations, I can tell you at least a half a dozen times that we make recommendations, and when you run into a city council member somewhere and you say, hey, what did you think about that? I didn't know anything about that. Well, if it's buried in the bureaucracy of all of this paperwork, of course, they would never know. I, I guess, we need to figure out what is the role of the planning and zoning board, because if we make recommendations and the city manager or the community development director doesn't think it warrants city council's time, then our recommendations really mean absolutely nothing. And I know, I've said this two or three times, that there should be some sort of mechanism that our role, and if you look at twenty-seven thirty-three general duties, I mean, there's a number of things that is in these ordinances, even though from nineteen fifty-seven, but we aren't exercising it, such as, uh, submitting annually to the city manager not less than one hundred and twenty days prior to the beginning of the budget year. And there's been no discussion since the three years that I've been on about that. And that's something that I brought up, uh, a few different times. Also, number seven, promoting public interest in, in understanding of the master plan and a planning, zoning, and slum clearance. I think it was great, uh, I want to say maybe a couple of months ago, when I seen the item agenda for a couple of the projects being advertised on Channel eighteen. That's what I would like to see. And how do we get to that point of informing the public if we can't even inform the city manager or city council unless you run into them outside of the meeting? I mean, it just, the process doesn't work. There's a communication gap, and we have to really address it. And a memo, I can write a memo, but it seems like, you know, it seems like, um, the part where it says, we should make reasonable, and we should make requests of, it says the planning board should have the power to and shall make recommendations in the city, recommendation to the city council in regard to, and, you know, it doesn't even make sense if you can't even get a response back, so.
Point well taken. I think that's a, that's an area that needs to be addressed in this revision that somehow puts a little more emphasis on the fact that if the planning and zoning spends their time reviewing and passing a motion, uh, it needs to get on the, uh, city council agenda, so. Uh, any other comments from the board? Ms. James?
Um, yes, Chair. Just to, um, as a reminder that our financial disclosure forms can be by July one. And there was something new, um, stated in those forms, which is actually going to be for next year on our four hours of required training on ethics. So I don't know if staff wants to touch on that, or check with each board member to make sure they're fully aware of that provision. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Were we required to complete financial, because we're not under the sunshine law. We're not required to complete the financial disclosure statements, are we?
You know, I don't know the answer whether we're required. I think, I think we are required to complete them. Uh, when I went...
No one informed me of that. I know I served on another board, and I'm very well informed that I need to fill out the financial disclosure form for that board, because I'm under the sunshine laws, an elected official. But no one informed me that I need to fill out a financial disclosure form for the planning and zoning board. I have a problem with that, because I believe if you haven't filed by a certain date, there is a fine. And that, to me, is totally neglect, that we wasn't informed of that. So can someone please clarify that for me?
Miss, to the chair.
Uh, I think, let, let, let our attorney address that first.
I've never filed one.
Now, we are, first of all, to answer, address the issue of whether we are or not under the sunshine law.
Well, of course you are.
Okay.
Yes, you are under the sunshine law. Now, the question on financial disclosure forms, um, and I will have to, uh, check probably with the supervisor of elections, because I guess one of the questions is, a lot of times, they will send you the form, and then you know, okay, I have to fill out the form here. Now, other times, the supervisor of elections looks at, uh, board duties, and a lot of times, if you are purely advisory, if you do not make any final determinations on certain things, you may not need to do it. Now, I think this board, uh, I believe, did they make some final determinations on certain things? Or is it, you know, I, you know, and that could be a question that we would probably need to clarify, get some clarification for you, and to let you know whether or not you would need to fill out the financial disclosure forms. I mean, my advice is, if you get it from the supervisor of elections, then you go ahead and fill it out and, and send it back in. And that way, you would not run the risk of, uh, incurring a fine or anything like that. Uh, if you have not been getting one, and I guess that's another question too, that I would also need to clarify, I'm not sure if there's a difference between alternate members and members. I don't think there is. Uh, but I would also need to clarify that as well.
Chair?
Yes. Mr. Colton?
I'm with the same, as, um, Kimberly stated. I have not, since I've been on this board, given a financial statement as a board member for this particular board. I have financial disclosure on another board that Kim and I served on, that we have gotten from day one, and we have to file every year. So, we are supposed to file a financial statement for this board. No one has informed us, given us, sent us.
So you've never received the forms from the supervisor of election?
Not for the planning and zoning board.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McCoy?
Actually, I have it here. Um, in most cases, if you did it for other, other elected positions, that satisfies. If it's the Form One by the Florida Commission on Ethics, what happens is, my legislative duty requires me to do one. So one is generally all you need. What happens is, you have to duplicate it and also send it to the local supervisor of elections. But I have the form up here, and it says, who must file Form One? And this is the form that's by Florida Commission on Ethics, and if I can just read it. Number five says, appoint members of the following boards, councils, commissions, authorities, or other bodies of county, municipality, school district, independent, independent special district, or other political subdivisions. The governing body of the subdivision, community college or junior college, district board and trustees, board having the power to enforce local code provisions, board of adjustments, planning or zoning boards having the power to recommend, create, or modify land planning or zoning within a political subdivision, except for citizen advisory committees, technical coordinating committees, and similar groups who only have the power to make recommendations to planning or zoning boards, pensions or retirement boards, empowered to invest pensions or retirement funds, or determine entitlement to, or an amount of pensions or other retirement benefit. So I think, in most cases, you do have to, um, do it. Now, that begs the question, if you didn't even know that you had to file a Form One, did you get sworn in as being on the members of the planning and zoning board?
Not that I recall.
Hmm, don't remember.
Well, there you go.
I think that's something you ought to... I think that's something you ought to look into.
I guess you aren't really members then, huh?
Guess not.
It's not.
You know what, maybe if we changed our rules and we addressed our rules, then that would probably...
Think we ought to do that?
I think so.
Uh, any other comments?
Wow, I'm bored.
Chair?
Yes.
Um, the second part of that was for staff to inform the board of the new four-hour ethics training appointment for next year. I don't know if you have that information available right now, Jeff, but if not, if it can be presented at the next meeting, because not all of us know where we can get that information from, so we'll keep it to have.
On this past Tuesday, I reached out to our, in from our director in regards to a specific point of contact to potentially set up a board-wide training session, if that was possible. If that wasn't possible, what was the procedure to have individuals receive required training? So that information will be given to the board as soon as I have it.
Any other board comments? Project updates? Jeff?
Chair?
I'm sorry.
Just one final question to the attorney. Are you going to follow up as far as the being sworn in and exactly what we need to do and get back with us prior to July 1?
Yes, I will coordinate with Mr. Gagnon. As far as the swearing in, I'm not sure that, I'm not aware of advisory board members having to be sworn in. As far as the financial disclosure forms goes, yes, I will. And I think what Mr. McCoy had read from you is pretty explanatory, that I think you need to fill out the financial disclosure form. Now, I, I can't speak for the SOE, but they, they may look at it, and if you fill, have filled one out for another position, I'm not so sure, you know, the language doesn't change on the form, however, the form may provide on there, or a lot of times they have the sticker on there, "Here's the reason you're having to fill this out." And so I think Mr. McCoy did have a good idea of where, if you just copy that and put in, well, as a planning and zoning board member as well, that way you are covered, so if someone raises an issue at a later date, you know, it's kind of like, no, I've, I've filled one out here as well. Now, I believe you can also, if you haven't gotten one of those forms, they are available on the Commission on Ethics website, that's the state website, where you can download that form and fill it out as well, and then just mail it in. I believe that they would have you mail those in as a local officer to the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections.
I would also request that someone probably inform Mr. Hamilton, who is not here, I'm sure he probably has not filed either.
Okay, no other board comments? Project updates? Mr. Gagnon? We've kind of touched on that already.
Yes, there was an updated project was provided.
Uh, I just have a question for you on item one on that list, SP 10404, and the Shrega property, Blue Heron Avenue L, pending building permit application submittal. If that was approved on 10-4...
That was the submittal date.
That was the submittal date, so it was approved somewhere in that, that's more than 18 months ago, probably.
That project actually did receive a six-month extension, I think it was actually discussed the last planning and zoning board meeting as well. So they are within their six-month extension period to begin construction and apply for building permit.
So they have two years, essentially?
In essence, yes.
Okay, no other questions? Okay. Upcoming board meetings, we have two scheduled, July 9 and July 23, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. No other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Number five.
Well, do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.